All right. Good evening, Board. Are we ready to go? It is. We are ready to go. Over to you, Vice Chair Treese.
Board of Commissioners meeting. Ms. Aguilera, would you like to do us the honors, please?
Yes, I would. The Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, is now meeting in regular session on February 25, 2024. Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Vice Chair Treese.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Fai.
Present, and I'd like to see Commissioner Willie's face. His camera is covered.
So, Clerk Aguilera, you've called the role. Thank you very much. And I would like to note that Chair Catherine Treese is excused for—Catherine Harrington, excuse me. Don't tell her I said that. I'm going to change my name. So Chair Harrington is excused for the evening. Maybe I was trying to get myself excused as well. So with that, I'd like to move—I first of all, I would like to say that there's been a couple of changes to the agenda. Item C point seven was revised, and item C point eight was added to the consent agenda. With that, Clerk Aguilera, do we have anyone signed up for public communication?
We do. We have three people signed up at the beginning. I'd like to call Dale Feig and Kathy Miller to the front, please. And after that, we've got Trish Rabe.
I made a mistake last time on that. I talked to Debbie and let her know I didn't listen very well.
Go ahead, Mr. Feig.
Thank you. Angie's passing something out. I want you to see when I talk, but she's working at it.
If it's your email, we've got it.
Well, you've read it. We've talked about that. I appreciate it. I'm talking, and the two minutes hasn't started. Man, I'd get a few more seconds than I thought I was going to get.
Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Feig, please?
Thank you. Acting Chair Pam Treese.
Thank you.
My Commissioner Jerry Willie, and Commissioner Jason Snyder, and online Nafi Safai. I'm Dale Feig from Forest Grove, resident of Forest Grove since 1966. I made public comment last night before the Forest Grove City Councilors, and I'm repeating a little bit of what I said then. I got permission to speak for three minutes, normally two minutes. I'm not going to ask you for another minute. And so now I have a minute and 30 seconds. And so what I want you to do is to do what Commissioner Willie did. I want you to read the 10 points about 10 Reasons for Modest Optimism by Robert Wright. And at the city council meeting, I was able to read those 10, but I'm just going to emphasize a few now on page three. So please read those in more detail. Access to civil disobedience are also in the rise as our resignations and protest against the regime. This week, former NFL punter Chris Cooney was hauled out of the Huntington Beach Council meeting after speaking against Trumps during public comments against the plans to MAGA reference to design in a library plaque. As cheers erupted—I'm going to skip to MAGA. MAGA stands for—to erase trans people from existence. MAGA stands for resegregation and racism. MAGA stands for censorship and book bans. MAGA stands for firing of air traffic controllers while planes are crashing. MAGA stands for firing the people overseeing our nuclear arsenal. MAGA stands for firing military veterans for those serving in VA, including canceling research on veteran suicide. MAGA stands for cutting funds for education, including disabled children. MAGA is profoundly corrupt, unmistakably anti-democracy, and most importantly, MAGA is explicitly a Nazi—Nazi movement. You may have replaced swastika with a red hat, but that's what it is. And I appreciated the sheriff being at the council meeting last night, and I talked about sanctuary cities. I got five extra seconds. Thank you.
Next.
Hi. Thank you very much for seeing me, for letting me talk to you. I've never done this before, so I'm sorry if I'm a little nervous. My name is Kathy Miller, and I own the business next door to the Yellow House, which is run by P H C. And I'm sure you've heard about them before. Hopefully, you have. We are working to get a good neighbor agreement with them, but I'm afraid that it's going to be worth the paper that it's written on. There's no enforcement of anything that is going on outside of the Yellow House right now. There's no enforcement that they can do if they do violate some of the good neighbor agreement. So we're kind of worried about what's going on. Right now, we're dealing with lots of issues of the businesses around that area, and we're wondering, is there any way that we can have a drug-free zone set up for that area between Fifth and Sixth Building—between Fifth and Sixth and Oak and Baseline? It's a square block. We're worried that if you fund the $6 million building that's going in, that they don't have the staff to run it. And what is going to happen if they don't have the staff or the funds to run that? Is the county going to do anything if they don't have the funds? What are the consequences if they don't have the funds and the people are causing issues with all of our businesses around that area? We don't have any recourse as businesses, so we're coming to you at the county to see what—if there is any recourse that can be done. What is the funding plan? We just would like to know this thing. There's several businesses besides myself. I am directly next door. My property runs up against the Yellow House, so we have a lot of unique things going on.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Hi there. Thank you, everybody. I'm not going to waste my time. I'm just going to thank everybody for listening to me. My name is Tricia Rabe. I'm with Rabe Family Dentistry. I'm right next door to Project Homeless Connect. I have spent countless hours talking to people about Project Homeless Connect. Chairman Harrington came to see Project Homeless Connect. Unfortunately, she came when it was almost snowing, and no one was there. So yes, it did seem like no one and nothing was happening, but I can guarantee you, everything is happening. The crime rate has risen, and I don't think you guys are aware, and we are here to make you aware of what's going on in this building. They are staffing Project Homeless Connect with people that are homeless, which is wonderful. It's giving them a job. That's great. But where are the people in this institution that are taking care of the people? I will give you one example, and this is just one. We were talking about the agreement—the good neighbor agreement—in Insomnia, right here on Main Street. There was a homeless man that came in. There was a group of new mothers behind us. Kim Marshall was in there, and two of the directors with Project Homeless Connect were there. The homeless man threw a chair across the room, went completely bizarre. None of them did anything. They did not do anything to defuse it. Three men stood up to protect the children and the mothers that were there with their babies. If they cannot handle one person in one area, there are 60 people around that place at all times. The crime has risen in that area, and you can look at the data and the statistics. They were given to me from Sergeant McCarver, and you can look at it. What it is doing to our systems and the distress it is putting on our community is ridiculous. You're funding this, but what is the intrinsic value coming down? We can't afford it. I urge you to look at this again before you fund anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rabe, for your testimony. Appreciate—it's Rabe, is that correct? Thank you very much.
That concludes the testimony at the beginning.
Thank you very much, Clerk Aguilera, and thank you for the testimony that was provided. Now I'd like to move on to our consent agenda. For today's consent agenda, we have eight items: two from Clean Water Services, two from Health and Human Services, one from Land Use and Transportation, two from Finance, and one from Human Resources. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We can see you. Commissioner Fai, thank you. Great. Passes four to zero. So thank you very much for that. All right.
Can I interrupt real quick just to say that I did not call for a show of hands if there was other folks in the room that were interested in speaking at the beginning? So I'm going to backtrack. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for the two minutes? I don't see any hands up in the room. Anyone online? I don't see anyone. Moving forward. Over to you.
Thank you for taking us backward to move us forward. I appreciate it. So next is a presentation, and we just have one presentation today. This is on the Emergency Medical Services Nurse Navigator Program. Well, I'm here to welcome Mira Semantel and Adrian Donner. Please take it away.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, Vice Chair Treese, Commissioners, for the record. My name is Mira Semantel. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services here with Washington County. With me today, I have Adrian Donner, who's a program supervisor with Public Health and oversees our EMS program. And we do have a subject matter expert online, which is Tim Case, and he is a program coordinator with our Public Health EMS program. So thank you, Tim, for joining us online. I'm really excited for us to share this information with all of you today about the launch of our EMS Nurse Navigator program, which launches tomorrow, and I will turn it over to Adrian.
Thank you. It is so nice to be here, bringing this extremely exciting news to you. We are—as Mira said, Tim is online. He will do part of the presentation and is here for questions and answers as well, if there are any. So today, really, the intent is to introduce you to why we decided to go with Nurse Navigator, to talk about the benefits to all the folks who it will touch, and talk about our rollout plan so that you know enough to be able to give an elevator speech on it if people ask you, and so that the people in the room and online know the information as well, as our public outreach is very important at this point in time. So the problem we see in the 911 EMS system is there has been a growing reliance on using 911 for situations that aren't urgent and don't necessarily need to go to an emergency department through an ambulance transportation. What we see nationally is about a quarter to a third of all calls could be treated outside of the emergency department. And then more locally, in 2024, we found that about 45,000 of the calls, our data shows, aren't necessarily needing immediate intervention or weren't life-threatening. That's a lot of calls. So—the remote does not like me tonight. So these calls that are coming into the system potentially unnecessarily have a lot of impacts on all the different aspects of the system. So we look at the patient and the payer, so the insurance or the other folks who pay for their care. They are likely paying considerably too much money for care that isn't necessarily what their situation calls for. When we look at EMS and our fire first response folks, about a quarter of their resources are spent on what's called dry runs. So they go out to the caller, they assess the situation, maybe they give some patch-up kind of care, and then the caller decides they don't need to go to the emergency department. This is a resource, then, that's not available to respond to a life-threatening call. The hospitals, who just like EMS and all the medical systems, are already quite taxed, so the additional callers who may not necessarily need the emergency department are adding to that system and adding to the delays that happen. On the EMS side of that system, it adds to the wait times and it adds to how long it takes for ambulances to be able to offload the patient to the emergency department, again halting the ambulance from being out on the road to help for life-threatening emergencies. So while there are lots of solutions, the one today is really to look at adding an enhanced screening to our 911 medical system. We have a lot of callers, as I've stated, who would likely benefit from an alternative care or some other type of resource rather than the ambulance ride and a trip to the emergency department. Some callers really would be better served by going to an urgent care or potentially having a telehealth appointment with a provider. So this is where Nurse Navigator comes in. So Nurse Navigator really takes into consideration, when they're talking to the patient, what's the right model for them? Would it be better for them to go to a clinic? Would it be better for them to go to an urgent care? How soon do they need the care, which will help them—the Nurse Navigator decide what to direct the patient to? Is it something that's urgent, and in the next four or five hours, they really need to be seen, so maybe an urgent care is better? Or is it something that could wait till tomorrow, and maybe there's actually just a clinic appointment they get to, or a telehealth appointment? They're also considering what the resources are. Does the person have an insurance that would really be better if they went to one clinic versus another clinic? Does the caller have transportation or a complete lack of any resources in the transportation area? They're going to take those into consideration when trying to pair them with the right resources. And I'm going to pass it off to Tim, and he's going to take it from here.
All right. Thanks, Adrian. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your flexibility for me being virtual, have a bit of an upper respiratory thing going on, and bigger to be—better to keep that to myself than to share it with all of you. So I'll walk through kind of the workflow of how things are going now, from the call reception at 911 dispatch to transportation or end disposition of the patient at the hospital. And then we'll look at how Nurse Navigator fits into that as well. So as you can see, I'm here currently. The caller dials 911, connects with a call taker who does their triage and screening, makes a determination, dispatches the appropriate resources, whether it's fire first response and an ALS or BLS ambulance or ambulance only. They arrive on scene, do and provide the necessary treatments. And again, if ultimately the patient requires it, transports them to the emergency department. There are times where that's the only recourse. Patients still would like to be seen for their medical issue, and so off to the emergency department they go. So with the insertion of Nurse Navigator, the first two steps are the exact same. The caller calls, dials 911, talks to a dispatcher, a call taker at WACA or a 911 center. They do their triage, just as they would previously. And if the complaint falls into certain categories that have been predetermined, they can be redirected to the Nurse Navigator, who does, as Adrian mentioned, a secondary screening of that patient as well. So depending on what they determine, there's a couple of different outcomes, which we'll talk about here on the next slide. But as you can see by this slide and this workflow, if the patient isn't eligible for nurse navigation, that call continues the exact same as it would have before with resources being dispatched, arrived, treated, and transported. And next slide, yes, thanks. Perfect. So as you can see, following that same workflow, they get down through the Nurse Navigator portion, and again, through their secondary triage, they can make a determination as to what level of care is suitable for this person either now or at a later date through a referral to their own PCP or their physician, to an urgent care clinic, self-care at home. There are times where they ask more detailed and in-depth questions of the caller and get some information that the initial call taker wasn't able or didn't have time to elicit, and those calls can be redirected back to our 911 center for dispatch of an ambulance. And we'll kind of go over those percentages here in some upcoming slides. But it's a more 360 view of the patient call cycle, where they can either go directly through dispatch and to have resources sent or through the nurse navigation process. And depending, again, on the outcome of that, they have multiple options available to them. So looking at similar markets during their Phase One rollout of nurse navigation, we can see some different breakdowns of the ultimate disposition of these calls, where 21% were resolved with self-care. That's—you know, they recommended an ice pack for a sprained ankle, you know, Tylenol or Ibuprofen for a back strain, or something that would very easily manage at home. They arranged for alternate care, whether that's at an urgent care clinic, doctor's appointment, same day or next day type of care. 61% did go back to the 911 center for dispatch of a BLS ambulance, however not as an urgent or emergent request, as a more time-appropriate utilization of those resources in those circumstances. And then with anything, nothing is 100% occasionally, and in this—in these four sites, about 4% were discovered to need advanced-level care, and so those went back to the 911 dispatch center as well for dispatch of an ALS ambulance. So sometimes they can ask the same question in a different way and get a different response, you know, uncovering maybe the true essence of the problem. As these programs mature, they're iterative, and those percentages shift. The more comfortable that the call takers become with the program, the more facile the system is with it. Those percentages do change. So some benefits that we see to the EMS system with nurse navigation is that reduced stress that Adrian was talking about. The number of dry runs can go down, where those calls that would have drawn an ambulance response to ultimately not transport the patient may be siphoned off into the nurse navigation program, where they receive just as good of care but in a more appropriate fashion based on their situation. And the other component really is—you know, it's been our ethos since the beginning, is that the patient is receiving the right care at the right time by the right resource. And now with nurse navigation, probably the right place as well, whether that's the urgent care clinic or self-care at home. Next slide. Looking at provider impact with nurse navigation, again, there appears to be a correlative factor between job satisfaction and value in nurse navigator markets versus non-nurse navigator markets. And you can see that there's a 4.5% increase in those that feel like their job is important, 6% increase in respondents that thought that their skills were better utilized, and a big one here, the 11.6% increase in those that stated that they had a higher job satisfaction based on the Gallup survey. Next slide, please. And this is where I pass it back to Adrian.
Thank you, Tim. So as we move into the community impact, a lot of what we're looking at is equity and access to care. So this slide—the font is small, I'm sorry about that. About a third of the folks who call into 911 are calling in because they perceive they have an emergency. Another third is calling in because they're not sure where to get the care that they need. And then these smaller bumps are—they didn't have any other transportation option, so that's an access-to-care issue. They thought it would be seen quicker through the 911 system, or they had trouble getting an appointment. So of these numbers, over half of them are really highlighting access-to-care issues. So we're trying to shorten that gap in access to care, especially when we look at folks who are underfunded or unfunded as far as insurance. So about 43% of the payer mix nationwide is Medicaid or uninsured, and of course, some insured folks have underinsurance for sure as well. And there are resources that will better serve their needs as well, whether it's working with a federally qualified healthcare center near them, a community or nonprofit health clinics. And then again, the rideshare option. If transportation is truly the barrier to getting the right care, it gets solved here with Nurse Navigator because they contract with a rideshare program locally and give the ride there and back to the appointment. In addition, and to talk a little bit more about the operations of the program, the Nurse Navigator program works hard to make sure that their product is being received well by the client or by the patient. They really try to meet timely service delivery, so not slowing down the access to care. Of course, they might—the caller might get better care, maybe it's a little slower ultimately because it's an appointment, but within the calling of 911, that phone process, they're trying to really get them served quickly. And they reach back to every single person they talk to 24 hours later to survey and make sure that their needs were met. They are—they want to make sure that clinically their needs were met, and if they weren't met at that first round, they're going to re-navigate them into the system and make sure that they do get their needs met, or if they have additional needs, they're now being met. And then they want to make sure that the caller is happy with the service the nurse gave them. So they're asking questions about how that call went and how the transport, if that happened, how that went. And nationally, they score quite well, 4.5 out of 5. You can see some questions on the side. There are examples of the types of survey questions that they use. Those can be tailored to each jurisdiction to kind of meet our needs as well. And just to—that's on the U.S. map. Just to show that we are not just picking a new thing that's a flash-in-the-pan kind of thing, Nurse Navigator is in or launching in over 30 jurisdictions across the nation. So they're doing good expansion across the nation with success being shown. Locally, we have Clockmouth County, who came online in September, and a year before that, Vancouver came online as well. So we're the third jurisdiction in the Portland metro region to bring Nurse Navigator in, and we're very excited. Okay. So Nurse Navigator launches next Tuesday. We are actively getting information out about it. Our website is now live, which is on the slide, and we are starting to push information out to our EMS partners as well as community-based organizations through emails and newsletters. Today, of course, is part of our outreach. And then on Thursday, the one Washington County newsletter will go out to all county staff with an article about it as well. Monday will be our final push before the launch with a press release and social media posts as well. And then we will continue to push out the information wherever we find avenues to push it. Our website has flyers and other resources in seven translated languages, as well as the website itself, which is a series of questions and answers about the program. Thank you. And then finally, I have to say a sincere thank you to our EMS partners, especially 911 WACA. This is a very heavy lift for them. As you can imagine, the triage part is theirs. This is a very heavy lift for them, as you can imagine, the triage part is theirs. And then they triage it to the nurse navigator program. Our fire partners have been at the table in four different work groups, figuring out how this works operationally, as well as the public outreach. And so it's, again, our EMS alliance, the way we work together is is fantastic, and I appreciate them all. And I would open any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there questions? I suspect Commissioner Snyder will have a few.
Thank you. Adrian and Tim, you've probably never met me before, but I think it's probably fair. If you haven't heard, I still am a paramedic, I don't practice anymore in the field really, but my questions come a little bit from my time as a clinical manager in the EMS industry a long time ago, and then my last 22 years in general healthcare. So just to give you a little bit of context, first of all, thank you, this is fabulous. Should probably happened 15, 20 years ago throughout the country. Next best time is now. I'm excited that we're getting somewhere, and I know that what's been happening in Clark County and in Clackamas County have been going well. So I, you know, at least that's sort of the info I've gotten from people in the industry. With that said, there's a couple of things that I guess I just want to understand a little better. And one, at least to me, surprising thing that causes me to kind of question further. One is, who's paying for the rideshare transports? Like, when I look at all that, I could figure out who is paying for each component of everything, probably, except for that. Like, I don't, I don't get where the money for that's coming from, or who, it's probably, I don't think it's a payer unless it's unless that's like a new Medicaid program or something. So where's the money coming from for rideshare?
Well, so nurse navigator is not free. So so nurse navigator, that's part of their cost, and I am sure it's passed on for the fee that we pay to have nurse navigator in place.
I see.
I do not think that the the rideshare transport is a huge component. It it really is what they figure out that that is the ultimate barrier, is that.
If that's the only choice, then they're gonna... So right along with that, I was pretty surprised, especially, I mean, I was an EMT basic before I became a paramedic and worked in a 911 system. And when I look at the nurse navigators sending 61% of patients back to BLS ambulances, when I know the limited capability of that, I don't quite, I guess I wonder if the nurse navigators understand that and and how that, I'm just surprised by the number. I would expect it to be a number, 61% seems pretty wild to me, coming out of that. I don't know what the thoughts are.
I'm gonna pass the question to Tim after saying that one of the things that we weren't able to show on the slide very well is that as the program progresses, the blue pieces on that graph become bigger. So less and less get navigated to nurse navigator incorrectly, and more and more of them go, thank you.
Was that number, like, before Tim answers, was that number that you were giving, was that, like, throughout the country with the nurse navigator program? Or where is that percentage coming from?
It was, it was throughout the country.
Okay.
Because we're not launching yet, so we'll have our own numbers in a few months.
But that's not like a local Clackamas-Clark County experience, that's a national.
Yeah. So these numbers on this slide are from these four example cities that they, or counties that they chose, and.
So that data is just from those four counties?
Yeah, so we chose to go with these ones, they were in their phase one, which is where we're entering into right now, and chose this grouping because Clark County is in there.
I was gonna say, it includes two counties in Washington. Interesting, okay.
But they expect about this kind of rollout in general with any first phase within the within a new nurse navigator jurisdiction?
Does Tim have more to?
I don't know, Tim, do you have more? Sorry.
I think Adrian gave a pretty good answer in that these are initial rollout data. And as I mentioned, you know, as this matures, this pie chart will start to shift around. You know, it's, the medical directors that are in charge of WACA and the EMS clinicians in the field are taking a crawl, walk, run type approach, and I think that's the the same for all the rest of these areas as well. So starting a little bit more conservatively in terms of the call types and triage pathways that lead to nurse navigator. So having 50 to 61% come back to BLS ambulance is is not surprising. And I would expect the same for our county. And we're we're still growing our BLS operations as well. I'm sure you're well aware that just about a year and a half ago, we switched to a tiered deployment model, ALS and BLS. So kind of really seeing how things fit through this program that could be dispatched BLS directly without going to nurse navigator. We'll learn from this versus what and how we can change that triage sieve to better account for those patients.
Thank you. My last question is going to be about the the 4% that are going to the nurse navigator and then come back to, you know, immediate urgent 911 ALS dispatch. I assume there's a robust QA process at WACA that's gonna be monitoring that, those are, I mean, I'm glad the number is low, but, I mean, it's still 4%. So that's something. Is that already something WACA is working on, or gonna be ready for?
Yes, there is a QI process with this. And additionally, nurse navigator has a pretty robust QI and QA process. They furnish us with Power BI dashboards that show a lot of this information almost in real time. And again, looking at these 4% that bounce back, as I mentioned, and and I'm sure you're you're aware of this, too, Commissioner Snyder's, you can ask the same question the same way 10 times, and then one person asks the same question a different way, and gets a whole different answer, and you're like.
Literally the whole healthcare experience, being a provider.
Yeah, yeah. And I suspect that's, that's what drives a lot of this 4%.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Phi.
Vice Chair Therese, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Adrian and Tim. Tim, I joined your virtual world tonight with you, so it's good to have you in company here. Adrian and Tim, thank you for your presentation. This is a really an interesting and intriguing idea, and I certainly follow the clear benefits that you've laid out, and I really do appreciate the thought you've all put in. I have, I too have a number of questions that I didn't really feel like I didn't get answered by the by the presentation, but I also don't want to, like, I want to say, go forth and lunge, but come back answering these questions, because I think you're on the right track, and I think you'll have a, you'll be able to collect a lot of data and come back. So some of the things that I was wondering is, like, how do we make this work into the current system that exists right now? And then I was also wondering what a, how do, how do, how will you plan to integrate into the current 911 dispatch? And then, did you anticipate some unintentional delays to emergency care? And what does that look like? And how do we combat those unintentionally, unintentional consequences with delays of emergency care? And then, I, I, I appreciate the data around the the other four counties that you laid out, but I was wondering what a sort of a robust success looks like of this idea, because this is a really a forward-thinking idea and very, very progressive, in my opinion. So th- those are some of the things that I was wondering about. And then, how will, what does this mean in terms of fewer ER visits? And then, could you come back and talk about the patient's outcomes if we, if you are able to track some of that information? So, in a nutshell, there's a lot of, a lot of questions that are sort of oriented, patient outcomes, and system integrations. Thank you, that's all.
Absolutely. And and I'm sure we will be really happy to come back or to to send you an update on how this is going when we hit that quarter mark or so, so we have some of our own numbers, because we're, we're also very interested to see how our numbers look next to other jurisdictions. It is, it is now, I'm trying to think what day it is, it is now integrated, I believe the test call was today, it might be, it might be tomorrow, though. So nurse navigator and WACA are working closely together to do their testing to make sure that the the process is integrated, the the phones can be transferred, and if nurse navigator needs to get somebody back into WACA, that it's a, it's a backdoor access, so they're not just recalling 911 to get started again. And those, that testing is happening, either it happened today or it's happening tomorrow. And and the other ones, we will follow up with data as we get it.
Thank you. Mr. Willie.
Yeah, I kind of want to go back a little bit for those in the audience and online. This, our, we've had problems for years on our ambulance service being able to meet a criteria of 90% of the time they're within the time allowed. So if you're needing an ambulance service, you're going to want to make sure that we are doing our very level best to get an ambulance there. So if they aren't there in a timely fashion, why is that? A part of it is that they are held up in the emergency lane at the hospital because they can't release the patient until the hospital accepts that patient, and sometimes that holds them up 20 or 30 or 40 minutes, which takes that ambulance out of service. But other times are like the problems that the nurse navigator system is going to help resolve. So they're not dealing with emergency situations that are really non-emergency. So with that, I'm really, I'm really excited about the nurse navigator program rolling out. I was made aware of this several months ago. Thank you, Adrian and and Tim, for making me, for having me have an opportunity to meet with AMR, and so they could roll that out. The question I have is, though, that this service is not free. So who pays for the nurse navigator system? And like Commissioner Snyder said, who who pays for the transport that is not an ambulance, you know, with lights going and everything else? Who pays for that transport? So how is this particular program funded?
So the first, the pilot and first year of the program is being paid for by AMR Northwest, so they're paying for, from launch for the first year. At at probably the midway point, we'll be looking at the utility of the system. Is it working the way we hoped it would? Is it reducing the burden on the system? Is it worth the money? And so the second year is partially paid for already. Our, to be honest, we, Tim and I thought it would be a slog to get nurse navigator into our system, and we would have to convince people. Our fire chiefs actually came to us and said, hey, we have some money, we would like to do this thing, which made our need to really grill and message the need for nurse navigator unnecessary, which was nice. So they have set aside some money as well from their interactions with WACA, which we'll pay for part of next year, and we'll start looking at how do we fund it on a long term. Nurse navigator's cost is based on how many calls are sent to nurse navigator it within the system. So we have estimates at this point, and we'll know better once the system starts to roll out.
So this is not going to be a burden on the county's general fund at any point in time in the future?
No, EMS takes no county general fund. We are a special fund and are self-sufficient.
That's good, because we don't have any money.
I've heard.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate you and Tim. You always very responsive to me. I feel like I'm kind of nagging on occasion, but I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one simple question, and that is, I I heard you talk about in the, on the website and different communications that are pushed out, we have multiple languages available. I, what I didn't hear, and I may have missed it, is in the nurse navigator conversations, are there people who speak different languages? And how is that handled?
They have, and I don't feel like I can answer this as well as I should, and Tim is in on different work groups than me, he may have better information, but they do have some speakers available, and they have access to language lines as well to augment for any ones that they don't have nurses on staff to speak. I don't know, Tim, if you have a specific answer to this.
No, that's, that would be my answer as well.
And given the fact that we serve a very diverse community, I think it's really important that we get that feedback as well in terms of how how are we, how are we dealing with the different people that make this, that part of their, their reach out to the 911 call center?
Yeah, and that's one of the things we'll be looking at as as the program rolls out and seeing how, if there are barriers in that area. The one thing that we didn't call out in the slides is that in in Washington County, if you can't call, if you can't vocally call, you can text to 911 to get your help, and an ambulance will be sent to you. With the nurse navigator program, an ambulance will still be sent to you. So they can't incorporate in the text 911, that'll be treated like a regular 911 call, and an ambulance will come to help.
Great. Well, I join my fellow commissioners in saying thank you for this work. Thank you for taking the step forward, and it'll be really interesting to see what the results are. So, great job.
Thank you.
Adrian and Mayor, thank you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, before we go to the next opportunity for public testimony, Ms. Angie, did you want to make an announcement about the, our, our packet for tomorrow?
Oh, sure. Well, let me clarify, the packet for this evening. So within this evening's packet, staff have been working on responses that we have heard from community on elections, and so listed in the packet. We have it separated by date, will be date, and then Q and there's a question, and then an answer. So the clerk will be updating the packet to include those Word documents tomorrow. So look for tonight's board meeting packet in the board agenda to find that information.
And these are the answers to questions that have been previously put forward, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you. With, with that, Clerk Aguilar, do we have people that have signed up for, to provide testimony?
We do, Vice Chair Therese. I'd like to call up Mary C., I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name, Robert Seward. And after that, we'll have Jackie and then Bob.
I believe it's Mary Hacalopoulos.
Close.
Well, close, I'm working.
That's why it's Mary C.
You're a brave person.
Do you want to go ahead?
You can go ahead.
All right.
Yeah, okay, you start.
My name's Robert Seward. I'm a resident of Forest Grove, retired physician. I've been out here about 17 years. The issue I want to talk about tonight is the cuts to our government by Elon Musk and President Trump. And the reason I'm upset about this is that I worked in the government, both as a physician and VA, and I served in the military. And I know that 98% of the people that work in these agencies are highly skilled and competent. There are, of course, there's waste and fraud, we all know that, but how are you going to do it? That's the question. Let me tell you about my experience in the Air Force. During Vietnam, I was drafted out of medical school. I was sent to Edwards Air Force Base as a physician flight surgeon, 1968. And one of my requirements to remain my flight surgeon and flight status, I had to fly two hours every month in any kind of aircraft. So I would go down the flight line, I'm going to fly, might be a cargo plane, it might be a jet plane, it might be a helicopter, might be a C-5A. I didn't know anything, I was not a pilot, I was never interested in flying. But when I got on, say, a cargo plane, I would take my seat, and I'd sit there for about 20 minutes. And during that time, there was a lot of activity. Dozens of people were on the flight line. The the crew was preparing the plane, the flight lines, the air traffic controllers were. The flight lines, the air traffic controllers were planning the route. The pilots were planning their route. So by the time we finally took off, all these details were checked, hundreds of details, before these large machines. Air flight, let's face it, is, is a scientific miracle. It really is. But it only takes place because of all these well-trained people. So when you go down, the average person, they say, we're going to cut the FAA. What's that? No, well, it's the Federal Aviation. Well, what do they do? I don't know. The average guy on the street, maybe he's never flown in a plane. It's not his fault. I'm just saying that the nor, the average people are not aware of what happens when these, quote, "government employees" or bureaucrats are cut. And I think it's our responsibility as elected officials to educate the people about what we're doing, what, what these agencies do. For instance, there should be a national news conference about the FAA cuts. And I have had Pete Buttigieg, our former Transport Secretary, have him do a conference with all the American people and say, look, this is what the FAA does for you. They certify all these pilots. They certify that the airplane itself is safe. They investigate accidents. These are highly trained professionals. And you can't just cut, if you cut like this, people are going to hurt. Planes are actually going to fall out of the sky, what they're doing. It's no mystery. So the bottom line is, as elected officials, I think it's one of the responsibilities to educate the public. For instance, this, this program, this EMS awesome program that just, how are the people in Washington County, how are they going to learn about this? Do they actually understand it's going to save money or, and, and, and be safer program? And so all these, all these cuts that are being made in our national government to the Interior Department, all these cabinet positions, American people need to be brought along. Now, we had, we had an explainer in chief once, Bill Clinton. Then we had another one, Barack Obama. But we need another communicator who can educate the people about are the role, the essential role of our federal government. So thank you, that's all I had. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Halkiopoulos, for the record, a 23-year resident of Washington County. Over the past few weeks, we've discussed some of the irregularities and statute violations regarding the ballots that were received in the elections office between September 23rd and October 4th, 2024. To review, reportedly 2,700 ballots were sent out on Friday, September 20th, to military and overseas voters. On September 23rd, 5,800, excuse me, 5,871 ballots were received in the elections office via various methods. From September 23rd through October 4th, prior to out-of-state ballots being sent out, 6,114 ballots were received into the elections office, and of those, 6,014 were accepted. Last week, we reported that to date, we had found 110 public officials and employees whose ballots were received into the elections office on September 23rd. That number has since increased to 121. Today, we have additional concerning data to present to you regarding the ballots received during this time period. We have found 442 ballots that are very questionable in that. 130 of them were received and accepted from individuals who were listed as inactive, and another 312 were received and accepted from unregistered voters. These are individuals who do not appear on the Washington County voter rolls at all. The 130 inactive ballots were received as follows. 12 from out-of-state, 48 from overseas, 9 from military addresses, 5 from other Oregon counties, and 56 from Washington County. All were listed as inactive on both the August 2nd and October 1st, 2024 Washington County voter rolls, so before and after the ballots were received. 44 had their records updated as inactive during 2024. One person was inactive when her ballot was received and then activated two days later. 86 of the ballots were received from a mailing address other than the one listed on the inactive record. The ballots from unregistered voters were received as follows. 3 from out-of-state, 40 from overseas, 1 from another Oregon county, and 268 from Washington County addresses. Records for these individuals did not appear on either the August 2nd or October 1st, 2024 Washington County voter rolls. They also did not appear on the October 30th or January 8th, 2025 canceled voters reports. That indicates that they were not added to the rolls and then canceled sometime between August 2nd and October 1st voter roll reports. All of the 442 ballots received from inactive and, and unregistered voters were received on September 23rd, on that one day. They comprise 7.5% of all the ballots that were received on that date, 5,871, and they comprise 7.3% of all ballots received and accepted through October 4th. That's 6,014. There's more information that we can report regarding this data set, but we're keeping it specific to the inactive and unregistered voters this evening because this information can be overwhelming and difficult to digest in five minutes. So by now, it should be very clear that we have severe issues with our election system and it's imperative that we work together to change the way we do things in our county and show leadership and guidance for our state. We are three months away from another election. Thank you. And here's the list of everybody that I just, all these 442 people, it's 15 pages, so I didn't want to print it out for everybody. But if any, and it has people's names on them. So if people would like this, I would be very happy to, to email it to you.
You could also leave it with our clerk.
With, with. You, with everybody's names on it?
Just leave it with the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Jackie and Bob Terry, can you please come forward?
Good evening, Commissioners. Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Jackie Poppin. I've been a resident of Washington County for 13 years. During the general election update on October 1st, the election manager, Dan Forrester, summarized several election statutes. Quote, "October 15th is the deadline to register to vote in Oregon. So per Oregon law, one must be registered and in the database by the voter registration deadline, 21 days before the election day, in order to participate in the election." Voters who have inactive registrations may update their registrations after this deadline and participate in the election. Mr. Forrester reported on January 21st to the board that, quote, "Election works year round to keep our voter registration rolls as accurate as possible," unquote. He also stated, "In October and January, there are a lot of double checks that are built into the process." The statutes regarding the voter registration are included at the end of my testimony for your reference. The following are questions regarding the ballots received and accepted on September 23rd for the November 5th election. How did these early ballots get into the hands of voters? Only military and overseas voters had ballots sent to them on September 20th. Were they mailed? If so, who mailed them? The print house in Bend, the mailhouse in Bend, or the elections office? Where did all these other ballots that were received on September 23rd by various methods, including mail and drop boxes, come from? Is there another list of ballots created other than the military and overseas voters? Shouldn't drop boxes be locked and secured until at least local ballots are mailed? What date did election workers unlock drop boxes? What was the first date election workers picked up ballots at the election boxes? Did teams of two election workers pick up ballots from the drop boxes on 9/23? And if so, why? No ballot should have been in the drop boxes on this date as they were coming from military and overseas voters. It takes time for a ballot to be processed through the mail to be received by September 23rd. Inactive voters, the 130 ballots received, how did these voters get a ballot to cast in the first place? Dan Forrester said, "These voters do not get ballots as they are inactive." Who mails them out? The elections office or someone else? And what form do they take? Then there's the unregistered voters, not on the voter registration rules. 312 ballots received and accepted. When ballots are received, do they get checked against the rules to see if they are registered? If so, how did these ballots get through the process? Two, how did these ballots get assigned a voter ID number when the voter is not on the voter rule? That's a big question. How could that happen? How does a ballot from an unregistered person make it through the signature verification and all the other double checks in the process? These are just questions in seeing the numbers and just saying, how does this happen? We'd appreciate your assistance in finding the answers to the questions. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Commissioners and staff, for your time this evening and every evening. It, you know, we've been at this for quite a while now, and my name is Bob Terry, former county commissioner and resident of this county for nearly 35 years now. This county is home to me. More than half, almost half of my life has been spent here, not a few years short of that yet. But however, I want to tell you now, we've been presenting this rather in detail, piecemeal, bit by bit, to the staff and to the Commissioners here. You know, we take this very, very serious, as our forefathers and the Revolutionary did. And I've said this before and I'll say it again. Primary is what sometimes way our history teaches things. Our primary goal of our forefathers was our right to vote. That was one of the major things of the Revolutionary, of the Revolutionary War when we separated from England, besides the fact of King George and our wanting to have the freedom of having a Christian religion that we wanted and not the Church of England. Beyond that, it was we, the people. We've been here now since the 1st of October for we, the people. We've given you a lot of detail, a lot of data. I thank you, Tanya, for, and for your information tonight, which you're going to be disseminating to us. We're looking forward to it. And in fact, we're kind of anxious to receive that. But beyond that, I want to go back into the fact of, the, the main thing for us, who is eligible to vote and who is voting? The chain of ballot custody is a very important part to us. It's impossible to have a true, honest chain of custody that is recommended by our federal government. It isn't a requirement, but they strongly recommend it in several paces. With mail ballot and the way we're doing our, our voting today, it is impossible, impossible to have a clear chain of custody as to where our ballots are, who they're coming from, who should be voting, and who is receiving them and how they are processed. We have looked very carefully inside, outside our chain of custody. The only two places we have not been able to really get inside to look at is where they're printed at, outside of our county, over in Bend, where they are originally sorted at, in two different mailing houses in Bend, sent to PDX in several different ways before they're redistributed back out to the state and to the different counties and to our county. And many, many hands touch all of our ballots before they get here. Those ballots should be, be treated as thousand-dollar bills because they represent the freedom of our country. So we've said this to you before and I'm going to say it again. The counting of the ballots, the chain of custody, the certification of the election is very, very important. Those are the key, key ingredients. We have given you at least 14 different places where our state is in violation of federal regulations and laws. It's easy for you to look to the Secretary of State and say it's their fault. This is a homeroom county. Regardless of how our able-bodied county attorney may be telling you how it reads, if you read, and we can give you the paragraphs of our state constitution and our county charter, where we, the county Commissioners, and our county can take control of our own balloting. The issue is not having the Secretary of State, Eric, and somewhere in the sky in Washington DC or somewhere else, managed by George Sarles, managing our votes. Something you probably don't know. That information includes your social security number, your address, and everything about you, for what purpose, for voting, when it isn't necessary to be done that way. We've offered this to you before and we're going to offer to it again. I am very anxious to receive that report and see the work that you guys have done, the county has done. But we have offered, and we probably know the system better than most of your employees now. We've been following this for over four years. We studied the '20 election, the '22 election, and now we're getting data on the '24 election, very expensive to us, at 10 cents a copy that you electronically send to us, and we spend a penny of money of printing it. Not very nice. Not the way it should be. I understand large profit companies may be requesting information in large volumes. That's not us. We're just citizens of this county working out of our own pocketbook.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob Terry.
I think you get the message. We stand ready to help you guys, not work against you. We want to work for you and with you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to testify?
Like, we have two people in. And how are we with time?
Um, 25 with.
With two people, we should be.
Yeah, we're, we're fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Thanks for hearing us again tonight on the hot topic of election integrity. My name is Ayla Hoffler. I'm a 50-year resident of Washington County. I'm elected PCP of District 301 and hope that my precinct will become active again to do same-day voting and paper ballots with identification that you are a citizen and can vote in my precinct. That's what we're all about. That's why we're here. And I anticipate federal executive orders to say that all federal elections in the future will be done like that. So I think we ought to be proactive and get with it and figure out how we're going to do that. It'll be cheaper. We will have chain of, chain of custody on our ballots. We will have results on the same day. We will process these things in our own county. If the rest of the state doesn't want to do it, that's their business. But we need to be a role model for the rest of the state. to be a role model for the rest of the state to do it right. That's what I'm asking of you. And we have been here for five months at every meeting, talking to you, and I appreciate you finally got some written answers to our questions that we have asked over and over again for a work session where we can actually have dialogue like humans and sit in a room together and talk back and forth. And that's what we need to do within the next month. We've been very patient. These people that talk to you are professionals, polite, and come prepared. They spend a noted amount of volunteer time to bring you the things that really are your homework. And I feel that you are misled by your Elections Manager and employees, intentionally or not, who knows? But we need an outside audit that looks at everything, and we need a detailed, itemized expense of everything. Everything, what the machines cost, what the people cost, what the ballots cost, and the time that we waste from Bend to here to there. This is just absurd, and I am very disappointed and concerned that we are not getting a handle on this. And we have more elections coming soon, and they're important. And we have precincts and people ready to do it right. So please, let's put back into play what always worked in the past. This will weed out the corruption and the waste of time and the mistakes that you hear about every week from us. Yes, I want us to be proactive, and I do want to talk to you in a work session where we have dialogue, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Go ahead, sir.
You even know my name. My name is John Woods.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, Commissioners and Vice Chair. These guys here ran those numbers, and then they gave them to me. And I looked at the numbers and I ran them, and I can tell you for sure, math and arithmetic doesn't lie. People do. And so I took and looked at those numbers and took them to a number of other people, and I asked them, "Am I missing something here? Am I seeing this timeline that your Election Manager put out? It says 2,700 ballots were put out, and in three days, 2,800 ballots came back into your drop box? How does that happen, honestly? Is that even reality? Something's going on here that we don't understand, and I don't think you understand. But as this thing, the numbers go wider and wider, it gets more and more exposure. At some point in time, we're going to have to deal with this. Somebody is going to deal with it, and if it comes down from the federal, they're going to deal with it. The other thing we have a problem with is we have this attestation rule. We have no security in our elections. We cannot tell you who gets ballots and who doesn't get ballots. Anybody can come in, say they're a citizen or whatever, they give them a ballot, and they can vote. The 62,949 people who were registered and weren't citizens by the DMV, I keep asking, how many of those people voted? Do you know? Does the state know? Does anybody know? There are no answers. How do you run an election like that when you have no answers? I'm asking specifically for an audit. I want to know how many dead people are on the rolls. I want to know how many people voted that weren't citizens. I want to know how many people were registered that weren't citizens. I have a friend in the American Thinker, and I told her about the attestation, and she didn't believe me. So she went through the voter port, she's got a guy in Australia to go through the voter portal to see if he could get a ballot. And guess what? He got all the way through the process. The only thing he did was he shut it down before he got a ballot to not break the law. He could have got a ballot. He wasn't a citizen. He was in Australia. He could have voted in our elections. How does that happen? I'm asking these questions. They're asking these questions. We are not getting any answers. And if we, we expect nothing from the Secretary of State. We expect nothing from the state government. And if we have to, we'll just jump up the next level and go to FEC and start asking questions there. But you guys are the certification people in Washington. Your election people answer to you. You certified the election. It's going to come back to you if this election was not right. I'm just telling you straight up, we need to fix it, and we need to fix it now before it comes back in boomerangs. I hope you hear me because I'm not, this is, this is something that could go wrong in a really bad way. I'm sorry to be like this, but like I said, I'm straight up, I'm honest, I know how to write, I know how to think, and I know how to do math, and this stuff does not make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone on?
We're, I believe we're out of time.
Oh, yes, and we, yes.
We are at our 30-minute.
We are.
Did we have anybody online?
We have, we have one person that may or may not be a constituent interested in speaking.
We are out of time. Thank you. With that, thank you very much for your testimony. I do appreciate it, and I know my fellow Commissioners, both online and here in the room, appreciate it. So my next job is to go to board announcements, but before that, I'd like to ask if any of our Commissioners have announcements.
I just want to briefly connect on the last four or five months of, I'm sorry, I need my mic on, the last four or five months of Elections testimony and discussions with many of you. I've spent a lot of time evaluating the information that's been provided over an extended period of time, the last six or eight weeks. Part of why there's a lot of information that will be available that was prepared is because I essentially asked for the answers. I'll be very direct about that. I don't know that all of you know that, but that's essentially what happened, and I think others had those questions, but I had them, and I made sure that they got answers. I expect that you review them, that you review them objectively. I am, I am at a point where I've spent more than probably, actually, I added it up, more than 40 hours on this topic from a year ago, from attending the sessions that one of you asked me to attend, to spending my own time at the Elections Office, asking very rigorous questions. Like you, some of you heard some of that, and I just look forward to you looking at the information and trying to be objective about it. I would ask that you spend at least 25% of the 40 hours I've spent thinking and considering about the possibility that, in the big picture, if you're talking about precision and measurement, that, you know, you, you may actually not be right about the big picture here. That's the conclusion I've made. I've thought about how to try to convey that in a way that makes sense and might be understandable. I considered using a, actually, a clinical medical example tonight to try to take it out of the election space. I think I'm going to choose to not do that, just based on the testimony tonight, but, you know, there is, I don't have an expectation, I'll just be honest, with how many ballots are distributed, that we know to an exact one ballot that everything was accurate. That's not how big numbers work. That's not how survey data works. It's not how, when you send 400,000 of anything to somebody or to a group of people, like, you're not going to get the kind of precision that I feel like most of you think or expect is going to happen. I think it's unrealistic. It's not how the real world works. You know, we don't measure really anything in the real world that way because it's completely impractical. And the example I was going to use, clinical example, is one that I guess I could go through, but I don't want to bore you with that. It's just that this is, this is a situation that I just implore you to think about the bigger picture. In my race for county commission last May, I think I got about 81% of the vote. I don't know if I got exactly 81% or 81.2, or, you know, was it 80.8? Like, were there 50 ballots that maybe either got miscounted or missed whatever? Like, there are recount processes for a reason, and those recount processes are automatically triggered when something is close, and that's why those processes exist. And I just struggle with the, the level of precision that all of you think is going to happen in the real world. That's the bottom line. And I live, I live in a, have lived in a healthcare world where that's just not the reality. We have to make decisions with imperfect information all the time, and frankly, getting the perfect information would oftentimes kill the patient. So you don't do that because it's not really workable. I view this as a very similar kind of situation, like, we could spend huge amounts of resources and time and get almost the exact same results, and that doesn't, that's just not practical. So thank you for listening. I'm probably not going to have a lot more to say about the Elections process, given the amount of work and due diligence that I've done, and now spending a couple hours reviewing the information.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder, and I think I speak for all of us when I say that we do take this very seriously. We've asked questions, we have received answers, and we look forward to sharing those answers with you. So with that, I'd like to let you know what the schedule, the upcoming schedule is for the Board of Commissioners. On Tuesday, March 4th, we will have a work session at 9:00 a.m. and a board meeting at 10:00 a.m. Thursday, March 6th of this year, excuse me, we'll have a roundtable at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, March 11th, a work session that will begin at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, March 18th, there will be a work session at 1:00 p.m. and a board meeting at 6:30 p.m. That is an evening meeting, and I just want to call your attention to the fact that Tuesday, March 25th, meetings will be canceled due to spring break. So with that, I would like to ask if we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.